Guys, I don't have a gal, so. It's alright, I'll use my phone if it breaks. Alright, folks, we're gonna bring that P to organize for the 5/24. Thank you all for coming. Do a quick little call, C call. P P Benziger is out. Jan Chastain here. Chad Guffman here. Delphine is out. Richard Rogers. Ron Cairns. And David Fisher, I'm here. Approval of the minutes from the 10th of May. You guys get a chance to review them. Any issues? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Thanks Jan, Joe Seck. Thanks Ron. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll propose. Alright, minutes are passed. Uh, we got, uh, any additions and deletions?
Better done.
Okay. In that case, we drop one agenda item, which is the Alpine Floral Conditional Use Permit. Take it away, William.
Alright, thank you. Good evening, planning commission members and members of the public. This is a conditional use permit application for Alpine Floral, which is a business that currently already exists in Montrose, but is looking to move to a new location in an existing building at 1301 North Second Street. The property is located in the O R Office Residential District where retail sales and services establishments, which cater to the general shopping public, are considered a conditional use in the O R District. As I understand, Alpine Floral is primarily a phone and internet-based business, and the majority of their sales come from that, and they have relatively few walk-in customers, but I will let the applicant speak to that. For any C U P, we do have the conditional use criteria that must be met for approval. Now that the new code has been adopted, those are found in section 1176 of our code. We don't feel that the proposal is contrary to the Public Health, Safety, and Welfare, or adverse to the city's master plan. There is existing infrastructure for streets and pedestrian use along the San Juan Bypass there. They will be providing off-street parking for the use, and they will need to minimize light, noise, odor, et cetera. Landscaping and fencing is already there on account of the existing building. Here is a plan that the applicant has provided for the use. There is, like I said, there is an existing house that's going to be used for the retail flower shop. Any new construction will require building permits, and they'll work with Sharon Archie on any building permits required. They have also provided some pictures of the site. As you can see on the top left here, it's a bit small on these screens, I apologize. The existing house is planned to be used for the retail location, as I understand. Also shown are some images of the existing street and sidewalk along the frontage. And this is, like I said, San Juan. And then here are some more images of the site. These are also included in tonight's packet, and are probably a bit easier to see there. And then finally, one last picture that they provided. This is looking across the San Juan from the site, showing the Montrose County Event Center. Staff finds that the conditional use pro- excuse me. Staff finds that the conditional use permit criteria have been met, and the proposal is in compliance with section 1176. Is compliant with the local zoning, and staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit application in the O R Office Residential District. The applicant is here tonight. I will ask them to please come forward and state your name and address, and add anything that you'd like to provide.
William, while they're giving their presentation, would you mind pulling up the slide that has the site plan? Thank you.
Hi there, we're Alpine Floral, Stephanie Keller, Thomas Keller. We have been, I grew up here in Montrose, I'm a longtime resident. We bought Alpine-
Stephanie, give us your address for us.
Oh, okay, do you want our personal address, or?
Whichever, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, we live in Aletha, so 7650 5425 Road in Aletha. So we, the Alpine Floral's been in business since 1970s. We purchased it about 10 years ago, and we have just had a dream of having our own building. So we purchased this building in March, and we think it would be a lovely flower shop and a nice addition to the local businesses in the area. So the event center's nearby, there's storage units behind it. So we do feel like it's an appropriate area for a business. Like William stated, it's a very low impact. We do mostly phone and internet orders, but we do have, you know, occasional, probably zero to five customers that walk in every day. So it'll be very minimal impact, and, you know, as far as noise and odors, we like to think it's a pleasant odor that comes from a flower shop. So, we feel like it'll be a nice addition to the neighborhood and the expanding businesses along the San Juan Bypass.
Thank you, guys. Could you confirm for us that those, the pink, or red, whatever color it is? There was a note on the page before this that said that those are like changes to-
Yes.
...the site. So right now, there's nothing at the far north end, and you're planning on building something?
Correct, yes. We would work with building permits. We do event rentals and stuff as well for like weddings, and so we'd like to build some metal buildings to store, you know, our equipment that we use for that. So anything in pink, we'd like to add a sunroom for our plants and different things onto the existing building. There is that pole barn that you saw with the Conex unit, so we'd like to enclose that and then build another metal building behind that, which is currently vacant.
You guys have any questions? Okay. The only other question I have, so if you've got the, I assume the storage stuff will be mainly for the events, you know, including the tents and all the chairs and everything else you guys use. If someone were to rent that stuff from you, is it typically you guys that go deliver that somewhere, or does somebody come pick it up?
We deliver it.
We deliver it.
Alright, so you're not gonna have a ton of people going in and out?
No, no.
Load and unload, okay.
Yeah. Like I said, it's maybe, some days, most days, we have zero walk-ins. You know, sometimes a Friday might be a little bit busy for date night with getting flowers and such, so we may have, you know, a couple of people walk in, grab a bouquet, pick up a couple of chairs and tables, but really, it's, we hardly have any foot traffic.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Alright, you guys have any questions for staff?
I have, John, I have a question, I have a correction. Page six, number three, right above staff recommendations.
Yep, you're the second commissioner to point this out to me.
Oh, okay. Not the fifth, yeah.
Yeah, that's a typo on mine, my fault.
Your smell is good. Okay, thanks.
So Scott, can you talk to us about the volume of traffic turning on to San Juan Bypass? And how this relates to that volume and the safety aspect?
Yes, so, C dot controls access to San Juan. This is low enough volume that it won't trigger a formal access permit within. And there's no redevelopment that would change, drive any changes to the access. Looks like, I think, there was some slight modifications to the fencing maybe before they purchased it here. If they go through site development, we'd have to engage C dot on any access, where those points are, volumes, and whether to get any triggers for anything special. But the volume she speaks about, nothing of concern to me from a, you know, you're well, well, well below any triggers that would be, you know, formal turn lanes or anything like that. So, within kind of typical traffic volumes that you'd expect on this, really, are manageable.
And refresh my memory, but I believe it was that company who would bring in porta-potties and bring out dumpsters who was there previously, so really, this is kind of just a replacement of that traffic? Am I thinking correctly? Greenway, or Green something?
Greenway Pro or something maybe, or Better Off, Roll Off, or something like that.
That's it, yes.
I'm not familiar with the previous uses on here. So you're looking at this one, compared to the volumes and capacities of San Juan, you're once probably, you know, below threshold to, would trigger any kind of-
Okay.
But definitely, yeah, there's, there's not much uses that, you can't get much lower use than, you know, five customers a day. So whatever was there before, this is probably likely either on par or lower than that, would be my guess, but it'd be speculation.
Thank you.
Does have any other questions for staff? No? Alright. And Scott, can you confirm then as well, just real quick? Because the C dot ownership over the bypass, if the applicant ever wanted to, as part of their business, if they wanted to or needed access, like that would have to go before C dot? Like anything we grant here, conditional use-wise, they can only have the access to, it looks like North Second?
It's all, yeah, all access and access control permits, entries, all that's 100%. And controlled by C dot, and the, under the umbrella, there's actually an access control plan for this corridor as well, that governs all of that, that they would be under their purview for all of that.
Okay, cool. Alright, in that case- Sorry, in that case, we will open up the agenda item for public comment. So if there's anybody here that is not the applicant and that would like to comment, come on up, state your name and address, please. And I can't remember, Sharon, what's our, where's our timer at? Is it up on the screen now? Is that where it shows up?
Don't have a timer.
Don't have a timer.
No timer, so I get all the time I want.
Alright, so-
Charles Ramsey in Montrose, Colorado. First question is, the city has no reason to, has no reason to build, improve, or maintain the portion of North Second Street.
Sir, sir, you have to, you have to address us here, up here, and after you're done, we can forward your questions over to the staff.
Okay, is that a street or not? According to Gary Baker, it is not a street. Period. So how's a business gonna go there if they don't have a street? And it's not improved? If it is improved, then I will have to pay for half of it? At first, they bought me off, they wouldn't even let me in. I fought them for, the city, for several years, and finally got permission, I finally got rid of all this, and I could go into my garages, but before that, I couldn't. And what is the status of this street right now? I wanted to ask him that. That's maybe the reason I'm here.
Alright, sir, we will get that question answered for you after we close the public comment portion. You've got a minute left, if you have anything else to say.
No, that's it.
Alright.
I want to know the status of that street, and maybe the status of the, what does the state say about people moving in, you know, driving in and out? These are really nice people, and I'd like to see them be there. But what does the state say about them driving in and out? Thank you.
Anyone else? Ma'am, come on up, state your name and address for us, please.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Mahoney at 1210 North Second Street, Montrose. First, I have a neighbor who has submitted written comments, and she asked that I read this at the meeting. It is longer than the three minutes, therefore, I will summarize it as briefly as I can, if that's acceptable. And then I have just a few comments that I would like for myself. This is from Connie Ronigan. She lives at 1228 North Second Street. She is my neighbor. She is very concerned about the traffic that would be involved with a retail business. Not specifically a floral business, but a retail business at the location. Because there is no right turn lane or left turn lane for any traffic coming or going from that location, there is no space in order to enlarge the street. It is a lane bound to sidewalk on both sides of the street, and the, it would be difficult to establish a widening in order to provide appropriate left turn and right turn. She is, was the former manager, operations manager, and safety director of All Points Transit. So she's very familiar with travel, transit, and the Montrose area, and traffic patterns. The traffic coming off of Main Street is accelerating to 45 miles per hour with traffic there during busy periods. If someone sees a sign and decides that, oh, I'll stop for flowers, they're gonna make a rapid stop, which may not provide a lot of time for traffic behind them, and then make turns. That's gonna happen potentially in the right turn lane, and also left turn coming from northbound traffic. Those are the main concerns that we're looking at, and, or she's looking at, and that, that those don't necessarily constitute safe, I guess, it applies to a couple of the conditions, the prevention, the conditions, three and seven, which are the use criterias, I guess, for the safety, and for the, would not create traffic hazards. Now, I can recognize, this is me now speaking, if that's alright.
William, would you, would you set that? Thank you. Alright.
Okay, thanks. Now, I recognize that the floral shop is indicating that it will be very low volume. I would assume that they would hope to increase that volume, and I'm concerned that there would be large vehicles that would be traveling in and out of that with the road conditions that my neighbor already indicated. The, my comments, the proposal for the retail business mentions zero to five walk-in customers for the floral business. It doesn't really address the possible increased customer base that they would be looking at, and it doesn't address the traffic that would be created by the trucks and trailers transporting the facilities and equipment for the event rental. The proposal also indicates that it's compatible with businesses in the area, referencing the commercial businesses to the east of the bypass and the county facilities and event center. And the event center did create safe and appropriate left and right turn access from the bypass. It does not reference the approximate eight square blocks of primary residential properties across the bypass directly to the west. An additional concern is the precedence. This use will set for future development for the bypass corridor and for retail and commercial uses. The increased traffic for additional businesses, and how that will affect the residential properties adjacent to the bypass, the local residential property values, and the impact to the quality of our neighborhood. Again, I'll mention, we're talking about a floral business, which I understand is low impact, and I wouldn't mind walking across the street to get flowers. Walking across the street on the bypass is probably not a really good idea most of the time. So, you know, I don't, I don't mind that, but I'm looking to the future and what that could entail. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Does not look like there's anybody else out there, so we will close the public comment portion for tonight's agenda item. Bring it back up here. If we could have the applicant come up real quick, again. Sorry, just state your name and address again for us, guys.
Stephanie and Thomas Keller, 7650 5425 Road in Aletha.
Alright. Could you guys just elaborate just a little bit more on, obviously, you do want your business to grow, we all do, right? But in the, as far as your business now, like what's the foot traffic now to your business?
It's like we stated before, you know, today, we had one customer come in. You know, we've owned it for going on 10 years, and there hasn't been a significant increase to foot traffic. Again, it's mainly phone and internet-based. People call us for their weddings, for event rental equipment, for flower deliveries. So we really have very low walk-in traffic. I don't feel like our business there would change traffic patterns or, you know, create any unsafe situations for, for travel on that bypass road.
So as long as you guys have been growing, I know you've been here for as long as I've been around, so, back in town, and you guys have owned it, and we've seen you grow. Has a lot of that business, the flower business, not the event part of it, but the flower side of things, is it? Yeah, if that business, part of the business is growing, is it you guys delivering, you know, large deliveries, or even if it's onesie-twosies, two places rather than people coming to you?
Correct.
Since we've taken over, our business has tripled.
Has grown.
But the walk-ins hasn't. It's, that's still the same and has been the same. What's increased was just our over-the-phone orders and our online orders.
Typically, the people that come into our shop may be wanting to have a wedding consultation, wanting to have a funeral consultation for someone that's passed on their family, and an occasional gentleman picking up, or lady picking up flowers for their significant other. So really, I mean, it's, I don't see any increase in that happening, even though our business is, has grown, will hopefully continue to grow, but I don't see a significant increase in walk-in.
And sorry, I don't remember seeing it in the staff's presentation, maybe Will did mention it, but. What are your guys' store hours?
Nine to five, Monday through Friday, and then Saturday, nine to one, closed on Sundays.
Okay. Thank you. Did you guys have any other questions for the applicant while we got him up here? Go ahead, Ron.
I think there was a misconception of what you mean by walk-in. She said walk across.
Yes.
Do you mean that, or do you mean people actually pull into the driveway part and walk in?
Pull, pull in, yes. They'll drive to us, they'll park.
So it's not really walking, you have people driving?
Hopefully not.
If they want to walk to get-
Not walking across the road to it, okay.
Yes, sir.
I kind of knew that when I wanted to close.
Yeah. And I'd like to speak to a little bit as far as the precedence that it'll set. I mean, I feel like the San Juan Bypass has, is predominantly commercial. You've got on Main and Townsend, or Main and the bypass, the gas station there. You have Kenneken, and 3M, and all of those businesses that are growing along the bypass. So I do feel like that area, you have several businesses, the McDonald's, there's the Lighthouse Cafe that's right there in the middle of that residential hub. I don't feel like our flower shop, or any additional businesses there, would really impact or negatively affect any of the residential properties that are there. In my opinion, they would probably increase their value.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And Scott, can you address the issues with North Second not really looking like a road? And not, and maybe not effectively being one, as far as the city's concerned with standards? How having a business there either does or does not change any of that?
Yeah, it's, there's a long history on that. I was going through the email history, I think some of the stuff that interacted with Gary Baker in the past. So as far as C dot looks at it, I checked the access control plan for the San Juan Bypass. It, within the long-range plan, for C dot recognizes it as a four-way intersection. So considering both sides of the North Second Street there to be legs of that four-legged intersection. There have been disputes in the past about maintenance. I think you've been addressing on that road. Ownership subdivisions, legal subdivisions or not, access, infrastructure, all. There's a pretty long history on that road, just best I can piece together here. I think what it means for this business at the end of the day, C dot generally likes the accesses to be consolidated, which in this case, I think it's addressed to North Second. Seems like the logical point. I think in the past, there's been a dispute of who maintains the right-of-way, if it's being used as a, for street purposes to access rear lots where the lots on each side used to have direct access to San Juan. Right, I'm just looking through street view here, it looks like the flower parcel here is now fenced across all those driveways, maybe other ones replaced. So it looks like its primary access is to what would be that remnant right-of-way, and GIS recognizes it as a right-of-way, to North Second Street, which is fine. And then it just comes down to, or work around the street crews, what's appropriate for maintenance for that. But, you know, for what they do, it's an existing gravel, I believe it's gravel, access drive would remain that way, and it's a legal, as best I can tell, from the data in front of me, it's a legal access for the business, so that's workable. You know, speaking to some of the traffic, so in a perfect world, you know, every access point would have turn lanes and, you know, be fully built to a higher standard, because that's not feasible and it's not cost-effective, you spend money. The right turn lanes, left turn lanes are triggered generally by volume, and speed, all kinds of various things that go into it. I can say pretty confidently that the volumes that these, either side of North Second here, would not trigger turn lanes by standards. Not to say a turn lane won't be safer, but it's just, they've established volume thresholds for when those typically go in, on the idea that you don't want a whole bunch of infrastructure that's only working for a couple, you know, even, you know, 50 to 100 trips a day, kind of thing. And the right-of-way doesn't necessarily exist there. So, again, I, you know, for precedent, there's about, I think it's 10,000 or so vehicles a day on San Juan, about current volumes. To kind of give a feel for precedent, West Main's slower speed, but higher volumes, like West Main, you know, like west of our downtown corridor, you start to count, there is 13,000 vehicles a day. It has a lot of similar direct access business driveways there, because that's more of a business corridor. San Juan's more of a bypass corridor, it wasn't developed as a business corridor all along, but I must not say it passed, you know, you're seeing residential pop-up all along. They're legally entitled to access, you know, in this case, San Juan via South Second. But, you know, to have business access on the bypass, you know, as far as volumes and speeds go, is definitely within precedent, especially if you like compare it to West Main, which is a business corridor with higher volume and far more access points. So, kind of, just to help give a feel for, you know, how that fits into the overall typical configurations of business districts in the city. So, hope that answers the questions, hopefully. I have two roundtables either.
Yeah, Scott, would there be, like, this looks like a pretty small section of, we can call it a kind of a remnant road, part of North Second. Is there anything that would trigger the city to bring that up to the standard that the rest of the side streets in downtown Montrose are, rather than it being a dirt road with a curb, you know, curb going over it?
Yeah, so typically, roads are built to the city standards when they're developed. And so if someone wants to come in and make a, you know, ten-lot subdivision or something, they would have to build the streets to city standards to do that. That wasn't in place when this area was developed, and so it was developed as a gravel road. It's not uncommon that we have some of those situations in town. Anderson Road, which we're paving right now is your example, you know, where a subdivision comes in under gravel, and the city has to come in at some point as a city project and change it over to a modern standard. We've worked to chip away at those. The way those are prioritized are generally cost-benefit of doing so. So if there's, you know, one or two users on a road, generally, you know, roads are costing about $1,000 a foot to do something like that now. Just, you know, at that low a volume, the gravel isn't overly impactful. But if it's, you know, right in the core of town, interconnects multiple streets, is seeing, you know, hundreds or thousands of vehicles a day, you know, that dust and all that traffic and all the rocks picking up is more impactful, so it starts riding to the top to make it, you know, as far as use of the resources available, justifying those expenditures for the, to create, you know, to improve it for more, as many people as possible, kind of thing. So, it, generally, if they are to be improved, it would either be by redevelopment of the area, in which case the redevelopment would do that if it was a large redevelopment. If it was smaller, you know, you'd maybe look at some middle ground where they at least paved aprons or something. Or if it rose to the top of a city capital project, which, given the low volumes here, I'd say is pretty unlikely. Where there's only the, you know, two sides to the road, and it's dead ends to the, or royal there, or city street, I think, city street there, so.
Alright, thanks, Scott. You guys have any questions for staff? No? No? Alright. All right. Any discussion? Well, I think Scott was just saying, there are no, there are no issues as from the city side or CDOT as far as access as it is right now. I mean, yeah, it's hard to see on the.
So, I'm only reviewing, so what I'm reviewing is the county's GIS map system, and this section right here is labeled as Second Street. This is the property of our gentleman here, oh, I'm sorry. There we go. One more time. This is our property, the property of the gentleman, this is the new property of the floral, and so this looks like, it's labeled like a normal street, just like any other street, just like Second on the other side of San Juan. And I, it's easy for me to say this, but the state is just being a bully by not letting people access their property off of San Juan. And again, that's really easy for me to say, but that looks like a real street to me, and according to the county, it's a real street. So, that's, I don't understand why the state would cause a stink for either property owner, at least from the GIS map from the county. So, that's, that's what I know personally I'll be basing my vote upon, is it looks like a real street to me, and I don't want to imply that somebody shouldn't be able to access the property.
And I think, Scott, you can just affirm again that this is our, the CDOT plan for access here, like, allows for that, for the residents and potentially the business here to get onto and off of San Juan via North Second Street.
Yeah, I think the preference of the state, the city, and I don't think there's any objection to use of this kind of, in North Second, remnant right-of-way for access to the property. It appears to match the access control.
All right.
Yeah, so, I mean, my ongoing conversation in the situation is, we've had businesses literally in the exact same property. Again, I think it's Green Day Solutions, something like that was, was storing their porta-potties there, and they would be dragging the porta-potties off and on, and that was my experience, seeing Green Day Solutions operate from that same business. So, there's, there was previously some impact. So, from my perspective on this subject, there was an impact previously, there's still going to be an impact. I'm not concerned with this, and personally, my vote will be in support of it when it comes time to vote.
Yeah, I think it's actually, it gets less impact than potentially what was there.
You know, I think both can be argued. You've got the delivery of stuff in and out, and that's going to clearly be an impact. I mean, yeah, when we're talking about five customers, I don't think too many people went porta-potty shopping, and so.
You would hope that.
There was probably very few customers, but I think there was clearly delivery in and out.
Yep.
Or moving their trucks in and out.
Yep.
And I'm still also just going back to the concept of, it looks like a road, I don't want to ever imply that somebody shouldn't be able to access their own property, whichever neighbor we're talking about.
Yep. Jan, Steve, anything?
Okay. Been very silent today. Gentlemen?
A quick question, how far is this from Casa?
It looks like it's.
More than a mile.
More than a mile, okay.
But, yeah, same road.
I live on North Fifth, and it's a gravel road. It's not a very long gravel road, but it's a gravel road, and we even get the city come in and add some more road base every so often, but nobody wants to pay to have it paved.
Yeah, that's the other option, yeah. Bring up, you know, sometimes a neighborhood, you know, because they, their lots were built cheaper and, you know, essentially built into that rate.
It's a 111-year-old home.
What's that?
It's a 111-year-old home.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it was an early development.
You know, sometimes neighborhoods are interested in collectively bank for it, that's pretty rare. Usually, it's mostly just waiting for the city. We've been able to chip away at a couple of them, I'd say in the last 10 years, we've gotten three or four knocked off of those.
Well, we like our little gravel roads, so.
Some people get mad, no joke, some people get upset when we pave them, because then more people cut through and the gravel's.
It's a cul-de-sac, so that's good. My comment really is, it's currently zoned OR office residential, and it would seem that an office built there on allowed use would create more traffic than what the proposed use is in terms of how many people come and go every day. If it were a restaurant or something, different story, different concern, but considering the nature of the business, I see that conditional use is really no problem.
Yeah, and I think the, you know, like every other time we talk about, you know, any improvements or things like that, if it sits empty, they're definitely not happening. If we've got somebody in there that's willing to invest in the property and has a plan and stuff, it always seems to go better. Anyway, guys, any other comments?
One more quick comment. So, keep in mind, we have, always have that fruit stand immediately to the south, and of course, every day we have, not every day, Monday through Friday, we tend to have the sub truck. And so, just more traffic, which is of a similar nature, maybe cars are not going quite as fast right there at the intersection, because it is so much closer to the intersection, but it's still one of those pseudo undeveloped streets where all that traffic at the fruit stand, and let's face it, there's a lot of traffic at that fruit stand during that part of the year. So, again, I don't want to stop or slow down anybody, or just because you're an eighth of a mile different, I don't want to treat anybody else differently than fruit stands.
Exactly. All right, guys, it sounds like you're all.
Made up, so I will entertain a motion.
I will.
Thanks, Ron.
I hereby make a motion to approve the request to allow the conditional use of a retail sales and service establishment within the OR office residential district located at 1301 North Second Street. The request meets the code criteria based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and as outlined in the staff report.
All right, do you have a second? Thanks, Richard. All right, any discussion on the motion necessary?
Yeah, let's maybe, I was so for this thing, but now, let's still ask a question to Will. The next business that does come in, if they ever sell the place, is it gonna, it would only be approved for a floral shop, or will this be any retail establishment that will have this approval?
I would maybe turn to the expertise of Chris and our legal staff, but you could, I believe, add somewhere in the motion specifying that this is for, that this permit is specifically for a florist or specifically for Alpine Floral Inc. Ultimately, that's up to you, whether you want to put it in that condition, but I believe that would be legally sound. Am I correct?
Oh, well, you are 100% correct.
Okay. Thanks, guys, beautiful. Just as a reminder, I think almost every conditional use permit that the majority of us have been on the commission for, we typically tie it to that business, so that, yeah, I mean, retail's pretty broad, you can go from having no walk-ins to be 100% walk-in.
With very heavy traffic.
Yeah. So, I don't know if we need to amend the motion.
Well, that's, that's up to you. If you want to amend your motion, or if you want to leave it the way it is, and then we'll vote the way it is.
To answer my question, because I was wondering, this is common, that you add something like this, and it sounds like that you normally do have the conditions to it, so I am.
So, Chris, in that case, do we need to restate the motion?
What we do is either restate the motion or vote the motion down, and then do a new motion. That would be the cleanest way, is to vote it down and then.
Okay. All right. So, as the motion was stated, all those in favor? All right, all those opposed?
Aye.
All right, that motion is voted down. I will entertain a new motion with the added caveat that we just spoke about.
Do you want to restate it, or do you want me to? Okay, well, let me pull up the language. Can I borrow your language real quick, since you've got it handy?
There we go.
Thank you.
Just make sure we get the business name right.
Yes. That's what I'm thinking, yeah. Okay. I hereby make a motion to approve the request to allow the conditional use of a retail sales and service establishment of Alpine Florist within the, how about Alpine Florist and Wedding Rental activities? Just to make sure we don't have any weird limitations. Within the OR Office Residential District located at 1301 North Second Street, the request meets the code criteria based upon the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing and as outlined in the staff report. Chris, do you have any advice on my motion? Do you have any concerns with my motion?
I have no concerns. It's, it's, it's their purpose, so that should be submission.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so, thanks, Chad. Do I have a second? Jan, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, motion passes unanimously.
I do have one question, just general for this.
Yep.
I didn't even think about it.
It was just one of those ones that didn't pop in there.
Yep, yep, yep.
For Chad. I'm glad he brought it up, though. All right, staff, any other business?
No official business, just one informal announcement. I believe Jase and Holly are in the hospital right now, should be in the process of having a new baby, so that's the last update I heard.
All right.
Which I think he told me, like, it was almost right on the due date, too, so good for them, they didn't have to wait too long past their due date, so. So, he's going to be out for a few meetings? I don't, I can't remember, he's told me how long, but I don't remember.
Yeah, he'll be out for, what, six weeks or something, something like that.
Okay. So, you're running the show?
It's, yeah, it's me.
It's the William Show, again.
This is their first, yeah.
Cool. Next meeting?
To be seen. We'll announce whether that'll be coming. Because of the, because of the scheduling, because of the way the month works, the number of days and the weeks and all that, the public notice for it has not gone out yet, so we'll see if there are items that are ready to be brought forward.
All right. Sounds good. All right, guys, anything else that we need to chat about? All right, cool. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, second? All right, Richard and Ron, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all those opposed? All right, meeting is adjourned.